Welcome to the Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, School Committee Meeting here at the PDC Room at Tingsboro High School. My name is Anthony Tonerella. I officially call this meeting to order, and I will start with introductions to my left.
Evan Cody.
Good evening, bear question.
Becky Stanton.
Michael Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Stacy Guido.
Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
Thank you, everyone. If you would please rise for the pleasurable audience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the School Committee minutes and the executive session minutes, both from September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
One.
Abstained.
From both or one?
Both.
Alright, so that carries four zero one. Citizens' time.
Hi, my name is Lennox Mew.
I'm sorry, not yet.
Good start, though.
Great start. Seeing no citizens here this evening, correspondence?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the drive tonight, you'll find a letter from Mrs. Lewenzic and Ms. Malus kicking off our annual Adopt a Family Drive. A staple here in the community, staple that's been part of Tingsboro since Larry Keller and Chief Chronopoulos and Eileen Flynn way back in the early eighties. So it's an important letter. It's an opportunity for us to come together in the community and support those in Tingsboro. So we look to kick that off within the next several weeks and just a great community event.
Awesome, thank you. Personnel, right back to you, Dr. Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three requests for maternity slash paternity leave. I guess we'll be calling parental leave going forward. Dan Koskinen, THS teacher. Zach Richall, THS teacher. I believe the baby arrived today, is that, or yesterday?
Scarlet.
Yesterday, Scarlet arrived yesterday. Congratulations to the Richalls. And Katrina Tumpney, our TMS nurse. We have notifications of two new hires, Haley Dinesovich, TMS paraprofessional and Tingsboro High grad. And Ryan Pike is our new Director of Facilities. Ryan started with us last Monday, doing a great job. Also, I have to notify you of retirement. Boni Dougay is going to retire at the end of the school year after eighteen years of service as a paraprofessional. Boni does a great job, so we wish her the best with that. And that's all we have for personnel.
Thank you. Share the success. Evan?
TS students will join us today to discuss how the start of their school year has been. In TMS News, Friday is the halfway point of the trimester, and progress reports will be sent home. The Student Council has planned a movie night on October twenty-fourth, and middle school sports, cross-country, field hockey, and football are in the middle of their seasons. As for THS, congratulations to the September Tiger Pride Awards, Pride Award winners Ella Keith, Leah Dunlap, Ava Crane, Tyler Murray, Cameron Times, Miley Preventure, and Kendall Sullivan. Students are nominated monthly for displaying tremendous character in accordance with THS's core values. Homecoming is quickly approaching with things kicking off this Friday during win. We are excited for a great week celebrating school spirit through activities and events. Last week, a group of student athletes attended the Leadership and Allyship in Sports Forum presented by Middlesex District Attorney Maria Ryan at UMass Lowell. Auditions were recently held for this year's musical Into the Woods. Congratulations to all those involved. We look forward to the show later this year. October Students of the Month are Annabelle Lou, Lilian Giegus, Thomas Collins, and Ryan Manning.
Awesome, thank you for that. And someday, one of you may be our student representative. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to take nine A out of order.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries. I will turn it over to...
I'm turning it over to Mrs. Kavanaugh.
To Mrs. Kavanaugh.
And I get to turn it over to these. So I'm very proud to announce our student leaders who were selected by their classroom teachers. We have two students from each homeroom. They've been working very hard over the last several weeks preparing for tonight's presentation about the opening of our school year. I want to give a special shout out to Mrs. Mitchell, who helped all of these children work and prepare for tonight's presentation. So enjoy.
Hi, my name is Lennox Mew Paige. We are all fifth graders, and we were chosen by our teachers to share what is happening at TS. I am Miss Rochelle's class. We have been working together for the last couple of weeks on this presentation for you, and we hope you enjoy it.
Hello, my name is Gloria Dunlap, and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class. The first day of school is a beautiful day, and we welcome seven hundred twenty students to the building. One hundred sixty-eight of those students are new to our school community this year. We also have a new administrative assistant welcoming people as they enter the building. Mrs. Bartel started in May of last year. She has enjoyed getting to know the students, parents, and teachers at the elementary school.
Hi, my name is Julia McHathaway, and I'm in Mrs. Lewis's class. When we entered TS this year, the floors sparkled and the classrooms looked amazing. A huge thank you to our custodial and maintenance staff who worked hard all summer to get things ready. October second was National Custodian Appreciation Day, and they were honored during our morning news broadcast. We would also like to thank our technology department for organizing our Chromebooks and setting up our classroom technology needs.
My name is Michael Melo, and I'm in Mrs. Beer's class. This year, we had seven new teachers start at TEU and eight new paraprofessionals. We have also made changes to our schedule to include two win blocks each day. Win stands for what I need, and it is a time where students have the opportunity for individualized intervention and enrichment. In order to add this special time, we have changed our specials rotation to include science.
Hi, my name is Suzette Riley, and I'm in Miss Beer's class. Science is being taught by Mrs. Grammer and Mrs. Maraca. Each week, we visit both classrooms and will be investigating, exploring, discussing, collaborating, and experimenting on many topics over the course of the school year. Our first topic is Earth and Space. The students we spoke to have really enjoyed this change and look forward to science class each week.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Jaskel, and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class. We reached out to Ms. Goldthwait to find out how the start of school has been for the preschoolers. They are learning all about what it means to be part of a community by taking turns sharing, learning to sit and listen to others. They are singing songs and reading stories. They are learning how to navigate being in a classroom with others and learning how to follow rules and routines while making music with instruments. Being creative by painting pictures and building community buildings with blocks. Preschoolers report their favorite part of the day is playing on the new playground.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Riley, and I'm in Mrs. Rochelle's class. Mrs. Stirk told us that kindergarten is off to a great start. The children are eager and excited to experience a full day of learning and fun. Teachers and students have been working together to create a classroom community where everyone feels comfortable and safe. Kindergarteners have begun to learn about the letters in the alphabet, shapes, and numbers. They are really enjoying being able to go to specialists in the cafeteria and getting to play outside at recess on the equipment.
Hi, I'm in, hi, I'm Lucas Wilson, and I am in Mr. Lewis's class. Miss Korea told us that first grade is also off to a strong start. They've been getting to know each other and learning about their daily routines. Students enjoy math talks, math partners, centers, and writing time. First graders report that recess is their favorite part of the day. They have just begun learning about heart words in reading. Heart words are words that you have to learn by heart because they don't follow phonics rules.
We asked Miss Nikozia about the start of second grade. She told me that second grade is the start of the school year, learning the routines of the classroom and making connections with each other. They have jumped right into math, literacy, and social studies, and are enjoying some new specialists, too. The second graders are excited to be playing on the big kid playground located on the other side of the school this year as well. It should be noted here that every classroom that we interviewed mentioned the playgrounds as being awesome.
If you walk by the gym, you might notice a new teacher. We are all excited to welcome Mrs. Valdina to TS. She tells us the start of the school has been super fun so far. She had a great start to the year and has felt welcomed by the staff and students. Currently in PE, the focus is on tagging games in kindergarten and soccer skills in grades one through five. As the year progresses, she is looking forward to teaching volleyball and speedball.
Miss Schooly told us that our third graders have settled into their new schedules and routines. In math, they are learning how to round, add, and subtract three-digit numbers. The first unit in social studies is on the geography of Massachusetts. They are reading and discussing fiction books with a focus on story elements. In writing, they are making sure to have sentences and not fragments, and will begin working on writing paragraphs. They will use their new words, prefixes, and suffixes to write those paragraphs.
I reached out to Mrs. Rowe to ask how her start of the school was going in fourth grade. She told us that students spent the first month getting to know each other, as well as the fourth grade curriculum, expectations, and responsibilities. Fourth grade standards can be challenging, so the teachers and students work hard, have fun, and laugh every day while they are learning. They are working on higher-level comprehension, including identifying the elements of a story and its theme. With the new schedule, they've been able to add literature centers in which they practice fluency, comprehension, reader's theater, and more. In math, they are working on relative place value as well as rounding. Bottle is a new fan favorite as a supplemental math extension.
Mr. Stewart was our fifth grade contact. He was very complimentary of the fifth graders as a whole, jumping right into the school year. In math, we started working on numerical expressions and exploring the order of operations before we move into multi-digit multiplication. In social studies, we're learning about the government, starting with Articles of Confederation and the Constitutional Convention, which will help make sense of how our country was formed. In science, we're studying the structure and properties of the three states of matter and using that information to see how everything around us is made up of matter.
This Thursday is our Walk-a-thon. Ms. Richardson, Communication and Media Director, has been helping to promote the event. It takes place during the day at TS and really feels like a big outdoor party. All the money we raise will help sup, will help supplement the cost of school events and assemblies focused on our Stripes core values. Materials to enhance our classrooms and staff appreciation. A special thank you to our PTO for supporting this event. The top grade level wins an ice cream party, and the top class wins a pizza party. We can't wait for October tenth.
We always like to mention Stripes core values while we are here. These are values we embrace each day at school. Stripes is an acronym that stands for sincerity, teamwork, respect, inclusion, perseverance, empathy, and service. We follow our stripes promise each day.
Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, Student Representative Evan Cody, and dedicated School Committee members. Thank you for showing your stripes and working hard to support the students, staff, and teachers at TS. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us this evening. We are happy to take questions this time.
That was awesome. When the students come and do a presentation for us, it's why we all sit here, why we volunteer our time to do this. So thank you guys for coming out, and obviously, your teachers are doing an amazing job. There's a lot of adults that couldn't have done what you kids just did, so congratulations to all of you for that. I will open it up to the rest of the committee.
You didn't think you were gonna get away without me asking you a question, did you, guys? Alright, you guys all remember what it was like to be kindergartners, yes?
Yes.
If you had any advice to give those little kindergartners that just came in, what would you tell them?
Um, I would tell them just work hard and try your best for everything you do.
I would, um, tell them to stay calm, focused, and don't be nervous on what's ahead of you.
I would tell them it's okay to struggle because there's teachers there to help you.
I would tell them that math is really hard, so just like pay attention so that you can get it right.
Good tip.
Uh, I would tell them that they don't have to worry because they're gonna do great and, um, yeah.
I would tell them don't forget to show your stripes.
Um, I would tell them probably to like try their best and just, yeah, show their stripes.
I would tell them that even if they do work hard, even if they do do something wrong, they will just learn from their mistakes, so there's nothing to like be afraid of.
All great answers. It's tough going last because everyone stole all the good answers, right? Good job!
You nailed it. I knew you would. Good job, guys. I don't have any questions, but one thing I really wanted to say that I noticed was all of you spoke very clearly and projected your voice. And that doesn't always happen when we have people come in and speak, so I thought you all did a really fabulous job speaking. I could hear all of you and understand all of you, and that's kind of not easy to do when you're speaking in front of a bunch of adults, so good job.
I just want to say thank you. You guys did a tremendous presentation. You did a great job speaking. Sometimes even better than some of the adults that we have speaking. And the only question I have is, do any of you have a favorite subject this year?
I really enjoy ELA, especially writing and reading.
I also really enjoy ELA, especially writing.
I enjoy, um, math and science.
I enjoy ELA, including reading and writing.
My favorite subject would be lunch.
My favorite subject would probably be ELA and art.
My favorite subject is math and social studies.
My favorite subject is math, just math.
Yeah.
And I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you all for coming. You all did a fantastic job, and families, thank you for being here to support them. We love to see the families come as well, and your answers were probably the best answers. You did an awesome job, pal.
How do we raise money for the Walk-a-thon? So if there's parents at home that want to contribute, how do we do that? Can anyone answer that?
Mrs. Kavanaugh?
Step right up. So we have been sharing the donation page on our website and social media and in my emails. And we are proud to say, I think we have fourteen different states that have contributed to our Walk-a-thon. So family members from all over the country are supporting our Walk-a-thon, and we're able to raise a lot of money to support some great things that happen in our school, thanks to PTO for cosponsoring this event with us.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So I love the fact that you all, that every grade cited the playgrounds and that they love the playgrounds. That was a lot of work on the school pretty part to get that on the capital asset project to get those playgrounds approved. So thank you, committee, for making that happen because now we can see they love it, and it's great, and that's all important. So thank you for that. I do have a question, though. Next year, you're all gonna be walking into a brand-new school. What do you know about it? What excites you about that, if anything?
Um, I'm definitely excited to just have like a different environment and like having new teachers around my new school.
Um, I think, uh, it's gonna be like exciting because, um, like you're going to a new school like and seeing how it is after being at like one school for like a long time.
A long time. A long time for some of you.
I'm excited to go to the new building and see what it's like.
So I've been at TS for six years, so I'm happy that I can get different, um, teachers, more than just two or three teachers.
You have a lot.
Um, yeah, no, I have like a lot. I can't count that many, but, um, I'm happy that I'm able to have more than just two or three teachers.
I'm just excited to experience middle school and the new middle school as well.
I'm excited they'll have AC unlike the old middle school.
Um, I'm excited, as like Evelyn said, I'm also excited to just experience like something new that I've never experienced in my life.
Honestly, um, just about, I'm really excited about everything. There's gonna be new teachers, there's gonna be a new environment, there's gonna be like new like lessons in the subjects, all of the above.
Yeah, that's great. All great answers. I think we'll have to get you over there at some point before the end of this school year so you can kind of walk around and see what that school looks like. And everything is going to be brand-new, so we're looking forward to that. They killed it. Did a great job.
And Mr. Chair, if anyone's interested, I do have updated Walk-a-thon numbers.
You do?
We have, so far, you guys have raised eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars with two hundred and eighty-seven total donations, so.
Nice. Good job.
Awesome. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess.
So moved?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote? Alright, good evening and welcome back. Kids did an incredible job this evening. We'll go back to our regularly scheduled meeting of subcommittee updates, and actually, we have none at this time. Unfinished business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll dive into the slide deck at this point. We're gonna talk a little bit about this calendar later on in the agenda, but in the immediacy, next week, we have a School Building Committee meeting at six thirty PM. And you can see that the rest of the calendar from there, I need to read it to you. One of the things that we will talk about, actually, we'll talk about it later on. Let's move to the next slide. So the MSBA update. Lot going on. It's incredible to be in there now and really see what it looks like and not just framework with drywall up. So the cafeteria is completely drywalled at this point. They're working on skin coating that and moving forward with that. They're framing out the classroom neighborhoods. Those were just big, open spaces now. They're framing it out for the teacher rooms in there. I have a picture of that that I'll show you in a minute. The curtain wall that is in the heart of the school is all framed out, and they've actually begun glass installation there. The front of the school, the front entryway with the curtain wall, the interior and kind of the alcove area are both framed out. That glasswork will begin after the heart of the school glasswork. Millwork is ongoing throughout the building. Tile work, ceiling grid installation is ongoing. Our next School Building Committee meeting is the sixteenth, and the plan right now, there's a tentative plan to have a tour of the school for the School Building Committee and the School Committee on November thirteenth, beginning at five thirty before our regularly scheduled School Building Committee meeting. So that is the MSBA update. We do have some pictures that I was able to pull. This one, you can see the cafeteria all drywalled out. That's us looking at the stage. This is just kind of from the dead center of the cafeteria as you look at. We'll actually have two cafe-style high-top seating. We'll actually have two cafe-style, uh, high-top seating in each of one of those alcoves, which is in the community entrance, uh, to the right of the cafeteria. There's the framing of the, uh, classroom, uh, neighborhood workroom for the teachers and the floor-to-ceiling windows, amazing. And there is the curtain wall, uh, that overlooks the heart of the school. So, the project is ongoing. Things are, things are happening. And, uh, again, fortunate that everyone's safe and the project is proceeding along on time and, uh, right now, tracking under budget. All good news.
All good news. Teaching and learning. Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you so much. Uh, so, last week, I presented on, uh, one aspect of our, um, S D I. I'm gonna kind of space that out throughout the year, so, you know, keep you excited about that. So, we did meet with middle school today, and we'll have updates for that, you know, coming forward uh, the next few meetings. But I wanted to give you just some information tonight. One, it's just really good news is that last year, through the hard work of uh, several of our staff members, including, uh, school psychologists, adjustment counselors, counseling staff, uh, and Mrs. Lewensik, our Director of Student Services, we applied for and then were successfully granted fifty-two thousand dollar grant for mental health and wellness and S E L work within our district. And so, I just wanted to share with you a little bit about where that fifty-two thousand dollars is going. So, um, amongst some of the things, furnishings for, uh, rooms at both the middle school and group room at the high school. Professional development, ongoing professional development for our counseling staff. Uh, consultations with, for our counseling staff with licensed therapists, um, on days where they can, you know, share questions, share problems of practice and so on. Uh, in addition, I'll, and I have another slide on this, but a program subscription of, uh, through Panorama, which designs and administers S E L screening tools. Um, so this will be able to be accessed by all students in our district. Uh, in combination with that, any student who was found to be at risk through the screener, we can partner with, with parental permission, uh, Trinity Care Associates to provide additional, uh, mental, mental health, um, services, um, S E L services for our students that may not be available through our current school staffing pattern. Uh, but I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about the S E L screening tool. Um, not that it's controversial or anything like that, but sometimes people are a little apprehensive about, you know, what questions are gonna be asked of my students? And so, I just wanted to make sure that it was, uh, very clear and, um, communicated to you effectively. So, the S E L screener is really something that can be, uh, useful in providing information that will inform not only, uh, needs of our students, but programmatic needs potentially of the district to help us better serve, uh, what our students need. Uh, the protocol that we've been working with, with the counseling department and our school psychologists and the adjustment counselors is, we really want to start this at the upper grades. Um, you know, anytime you roll out anything, there could be some bumps in the road. We want to make sure we get it right. Um, and I think our seniors will give us really strong feedback if we need to adjust something, so I think that's a great place to start. Uh, this will be run primarily through our school counselors, our social workers, school psychologists. They'll administer the screeners. We'll set some time aside. It's maybe twenty minutes it might take to, you know, I've actually taken it myself just to try it out, make sure it's working. Uh, but this is a really important part. It asks some personal questions of kids about how they're feeling, how school is for them. And honestly, some people are a little apprehensive about people asking their kids those types of things. So, we want to make sure that we're really communicative in that this isn't mandatory. Kids do not have to participate in this. So, parents will have the option to, what we call, opt their student out of participating in the survey. And if they want to, they can also request like to see what the questions on the survey would be. Now, we don't want to just share it out to everyone because we want the students to answer it without having, you know, forethought about what's going to be. We want them to answer from their heart and what they're feeling and what they're thinking. So, um, the plan is to roll this out to both seniors and then juniors within the next month or so, uh, because we have access to, as we talked about, that Trinity Care system. For any student that was, you know, shared that they really had concerns or wanted to talk to someone, and then with parental permission, we could offer those services to them at no charge whatsoever. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, uh, what we plan to do. Parents will be getting information from, um, again, our counseling department, um, identifying the specifics about what's in there, but I wanted you to have that information upfront before any information went out to parents or the community at large. Uh, are there any questions that you might have that hopefully I could answer for you?
If I could just add one thing, I think this piggybacks the work that we've done uh, in our focus on social emotional learning over the past several years. I think, well, two or three years ago, we had a lot of conversation about seeing concern uh, with some of our students and then their need for assistance and counseling, uh, rising, which is why we've addressed things through additional positions that we've added in this district over the past several years. So, I think this is a good compliment to say, okay, we've added these supports. How effective are these supports? And where else do we need to target interventions, uh, through staffing if need be? So, I think this is a solid next step for us.
I mean, the great news is we can get tier-two support for our students, um, at no charge here. So, even if we do identify students need more, we can cover that without coming to you and asking for, you know, a greater, you know, another position in the budget, at least for now. So, um, I see a lot of positive in this, but again, some people can be apprehensive about this, so I want to make sure we were clear and upfront about that. Alright, no other questions on that? I do have one other item that, um, I was asked about last week, which was, um, an update on that chronic absenteeism number. We talked about that last year. We talked about it last year as a real concern in Tingsboro, but I do have to share like, all over the country, this is a major concern. And certainly in Massachusetts and all over the country. So, I wanted to just share this four-year, uh, trend that we see, um, in chronic absenteeism. Certainly, following the pandemic, it has been an issue, uh, in education throughout our country. Um, but this is a cross-section of different subgroups. We call them subgroups, and this is how the M C A S is broken out and a lot of things are broken out. Looking at all students, but then also students that meet certain criteria may fall into certain, uh, racial or ethnic groups or students that we would consider our high-needs population. And our high-needs population includes, uh, our E L L students, our low-income students, and our students identified with a learning disability. They are all included in that particular group, but they're also, in some instances, broken out here. Um, so, this is the really good news. As you look at twenty twenty-three, those numbers were very high, and they were very high in twenty-two as well and in twenty-one, but we saw a massive escalation in twenty-two and twenty-three. But as we looked at twenty twenty-four, that's the school year ending twenty twenty-four, we see everything in green is a improvement from the year before. And we, we made a significant effort at all three building levels to make sure we got the word out about attendance is important. Not that we want students to come, come to school when they don't feel well and they're sick, but if we can be in school, attendance is really important. It's one of the biggest, obviously, if you're not in school, you're not gonna learn effectively. So, um, one of the biggest indicators of student success. So, in almost all categories, we saw, well, in all categories, we did see an improvement. And in our students, um, really one of our, our most, um, how should I say it? Students at most risk if they're not in school is our, our M L L or E L L students. So, students who are, have not fully grasped the English language yet but are moving towards that. Um, we really need them in school. And look at the massive drop in that population last year from thirty-two percent to fourteen percent. Um, so, these are all significantly better than state average. And so, I think that's a testament to our school administrators, our teachers, and our community and parents. So, uh, really happy with that. As soon as I shared this with Mrs. Kavanaugh, she said, oh, we gotta get in single digit, single digits next year. So, it'll be an ongoing thing. The more we can have students in school, the more likely we are to see, you know, tremendous student growth. But, uh, this is really good news, so very happy to share with you. Any questions I can answer on this?
That's district-wide.
This is district-wide. Yeah, we certainly can break it down by schools as well.
I just, you had mentioned Mrs. Kavanaugh, so I just wanted to make sure. I had followed in my brain district-wide, and then you said that, and I'm like, wait a minute, did I misunderstand? So, no, okay.
Nope, this is district-wide, um, but, I mean, as you can imagine, all the schools saw some pretty dramatic improvement, so it's good.
And twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three still had some COVID?
Yeah, lingering effects. So, yeah, we do expect it to go down, and I think statewide, it has gone down. But the good news for us, uh, not that we want, wish, you know, chronic absenteeism on anyone, but we're improving quicker or more quickly than, uh, the average of the rest of the state. So, uh, that's why I really want to stress all the hard work that went into making this happen, um, by all parties.
Great work by all. Thank you. Will you go to nine B, School Committee Calendar this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, as I kind of alluded to earlier with the slide deck, um, Fall Town Meeting has been scheduled for seven P M. at T E S on April twenty-second, oh, April twenty-second, October twenty-second. Uh, we have a school committee meeting that night as well. Uh, historically, when this has happened and they fall on the same date, we've canceled our school committee meeting, um, making the recommend, recommendation that we, we again cancel. Though there's nothing specific on the Fall Town Meeting for the schools, uh, I believe, um, I think it's important that we as representatives show up at town meeting, uh, to be civically responsible, so. So, I would make a recommendation that we cancel our October twenty-second school comm, school committee meeting. Have a single signer come in to see Mr. Messina and just carry on with the November thing. We are going to have technology present on October twenty-second. We will push back the technology subcommittee meeting and the presentation to November sixth, I think it is.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the carries, five zero zero. Thank you. And now on to finance. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, eleven bill warrants were presented to the school committee, uh, tonight. I do have them back. As always, in your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, in your drive are the last two paydates, the paydate of September twenty-third and the paydate of October second with the corresponding warrant numbers and amounts. And that is it for me for finance.
Excellent. Uh, School Committee Discussion. Start with Evan.
Evan, thank you for your presentation. And to the T E S administration, students, and parents, they did a great job and it was much appreciated. Uh, congratulations on the mental health grant. I can say from being in healthcare, I, we've definitely seen an increase in terms of mental health, among those issues for young kids, and this is a great support mechanism. And last night, I had the opportunity to go to the National Honor Society induction, which I hadn't gone to since my prior days, so it was really nice. Uh, the students did a great job. Congratulations to all that were inducted and have a very successful educational journey.
I just want to comment about the middle school. It's looking great. Um, you know, thank you, Dr. Flanagan, and the project team for the hard work that's going into it. Um, you know, we have a, we have a great support with Left Field, J C J, and Fontaine Brothers, so, um, happy to be in partnership with them and happy to see it coming along.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Uh, thank you to those T E S kids tonight. I am super proud of you all. Um, I know they've left already, but, um, most of those kids are friends with my kids, so it was, it's always nice to see when, um, they come out and shine. Super excited about that mental health grant for the district. That's huge. And I'm excited to see what fruits that gives our students in terms of just getting them the help they need when they need it and helping us be able to screen some stuff to help them aware they need it, so. That's it.
Uh, elementary school, phenomenal. Awesome job tonight.
I second that. They did a great job. Uh, thank you to the parents for coming up as well.
Yes.
Um, taking their time out of their time, so appreciate that. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Richall and his wife Emily on the birth of their daughter. Enjoy every minute. So, we do have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaint or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will return from executive session only to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting. I am seeking a motion to go into executive session. This requires a roll call vote. In favor?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you all and have a good night.